We are going to go ahead and get started. It's six o'clock, so I will go ahead and call to order the June 7th, 2022 Placerville Planning Commission meeting at 6:00 PM. If everyone can and join me for lunch, we'll envision our beautiful flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to be the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Ross, please call roll.
Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Vice Chair Gopper?
Here.
Commissioner Keeney?
Here.
Chair Lepper?
Here.
Commissioner List?
Here.
Full house today.
We have a full house for the first time in a while.
Move to bylaws.
Everybody. We do not have a closed session report to report out on tonight, and so we will move to the adoption of our agenda. Move to adopt. Okay. Okay, so motion by Commissioner Gopper, second by Commissioner List to adopt the agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda passes with full adoption. Next, we'll move to our consent calendar. We'll approve the minutes of our regular planning commission meeting from May 17th, 2022. I will move to adopt. Approving the minutes, please. I will second that. Those in favor of adopting the minutes from the May 17th, 2022 meeting, say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed or abstaining?
Abstained.
Okay, we have two abstentions due to absence at the meeting of Commissioner Friend and Commissioner Keeney. So next, we will go to items pulled from the -- hey, hello there. Items pulled from the consent calendar, which we have none today. And so next, we'll move to item number seven, which is items of interest to the public. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on non-agendized items. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the commission on agenda topics not on tonight's agenda?
I think I'm on the agenda.
You're on the agenda, okay, great. Okay, so seeing no one else in the audience, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion and move to our written communications. Do we have any written communications tonight, Mr. Ross?
Uh, no written communications, Chair.
Great, thank you. And do we have any presentations or educational workshops?
We have none today.
Great. So we'll move right along to our 10.1 Environmental Assessment Public Hearing Site Plan Review 82-18-R, which is a consideration to change the building exterior at 1,008 Fowler Way. Mr. Ross?
That staff report is going to be provided by our new associate planner, Kristen Hunter.
Fantastic. Miss Hunter.
I missed, obviously, I missed the introduction. You must have been introduced at the last meeting, Ross.
May 2nd.
May 2nd, okay, so I wasn't here, May 17th, if you were introduced, so how exciting that is.
Yes.
We're very pleased to have her. She has been taking a huge burden off my shoulders.
Only imagine.
She's fantastic.
Well, then, please, take it away.
All right, okay. So this is the request from the applicant to consider revision to site plan review 82-18 to change the existing building exterior from horizontal woodlack siding and vertical T111 to stucco, and also to consider a categorical exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, per guidelines section 15301, which allows for the minor alterations of an existing structure that result in negligible or no change in the former use. Then background on the building. Construction of the building located at 1,008 Fowler Way was completed in the fall of 1983, and included an L shape building, parking lot, and retaining wall beyond the directly adjacent medical and dental facilities, to the north is Sierra Elementary School, to the south Marshall Medical Center, and to the east and west single-family and multifamily residential neighborhoods. Directly adjacent to the front of the entrance of the building is a parking lot with a total of 26 stalls. In 2021, the parcel was sold to the new owners, and the building interior was remodeled to remove all interior nonstructural partition walls in order to begin the process of creating two dental offices inside the existing building for the new parcel owners. As proposed, SPR 8218-R would modify the exterior to match the adjacent buildings shown in figure three of the staff report and result in a more professional and consistent appearance. In reviewing the application and site conditions, staff finds the site suitable and adequate for the proposed exterior alteration, and that the proposed alteration is in harmony with the general plan's community design goals and policies. Furthermore, the request is consistent with the City of Placerville's development guide in that the new exterior of the building will be visually compatible with surrounding buildings. Therefore, staff recommends the planning commission take the following action: adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the following findings effect in support of SPR 8218-R, including that the request is exempt from SEQA section 15301, which exempts projects involving but not limited to the operation, repair, maintenance permitting, leasing, licensing, or minor alteration of existing structure resulting in negligible or no change in former use. The request is consistent and in harmony with the general plan in that it will encourage the restoration and reuse of an older structure. The request would further goal I, policy three of the community design element through the use of materials that are suited to the area and are consistent with surrounding buildings. And lastly, approve SPR 8218-R located at 1,008 Fowler Way based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Conditions of approval from SPR 82-18 are included in the staff report along with a new condition, condition E. The conditions are as follows: A, sign and record an agreement with the adjacent property owners on the south for grading and maintenance of retaining walls on both properties; B, submit detail of any additional signs for planning commission approval; C, submit proposed retaining wall materials for staff approval; D, extend the walkway to Fowler Way; and E, project owner or his/her successor's heirs or assigns shall record a landscaping maintenance agreement prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the site in accordance with City Code section 10-4-9, site plan review.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for that. Okay, good. Do any commissioners have any questions for staff based on the report that you received?
I have one question of my name, Chair. With regards to new condition E, when this was approved previously, was there a landscaping required?
There was not.
Okay, we just didn't do that back then, is that kind of?
I believe it was adopted in 2015, that apartment.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Thank you.
No, any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Where's the retaining wall? They didn't, I don't see a picture that I just not realized what I was looking at. Is it, let's see, on page three, is it the top right? Is that where the retaining wall is going to go?
So this is only for the changing of the exterior of the building. We included conditions of approval from the build of the original building, which includes the retaining wall. So this would just be for the applicant to confirm that all conditions of approval are met before.
Okay.
Yeah, Chair, if I could just add, so basically, what staff did here is we just copied, if you will, the conditions of approval for the original site plan review. We're only adding condition E because that's required under code, and we don't have a landscaping agreement. The retaining wall is already in, and we do have an agreement already for the retaining wall. But it's always left in because five, 10 years from now, maybe the retaining wall needs maintenance or some issue, so we don't delete the conditions, we just carry them forward.
I remember in that recording, it said A, that it was met already, that one. Yeah, okay. Okay, any other questions on that? No, perfect.
Do we know is the building in being occupied at this point?
I do not believe so, no. They're still doing interior alterations.
Okay.
Perfect. So if there's no more questions, then we'll?
Just one more. I don't know if we know the answer, but how is the facade going to change? Will it still have the same architectural look, just where we see wood siding is going to be stucco? They're not going to make this building look like the adjacent ones?
No other change of architectural features of the building.
Yeah, they're not going to.
Other than the change in siding. Strictly the change in siding.
Okay, so it will look like these pictures, just on the material.
Flatter, like the one on the next page, I think. Like these. Okay. Any other questions? I see none right now, and I'll have a chance in a minute to do again. I will go ahead and open this up for public comment. So if any members of the public wish to make a comment on this site plan review, you may stand up here and approach the commission. I have no comment? Okay, great. Seeing no comment on this topic, I will go ahead and close public comment for this hearing and return the matter to commissioners for discussion and action. I didn't have too many questions on it. The only clarification I did wonder is, is A on figure three going to be painted as well, or is that just an example of a stucco building near it?
That's an example of a adjacent building.
Okay, I thought so. I just wanted to make sure that I was interpreting that correctly. Anyone else have any comments or questions on this application?
No. No one knows in that historic district what happened.
Not in historic district, much more straightforward. I'll move to adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings as listed in the staff report, and approve SPR 8218-R in accordance with the conditions of approval listed in the staff report.
One second.
Battle for a second. Thank you, Poison. So we have a first and a second to approve the application as submitted. I will go ahead and ask Mr. Ross to call roll.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gopper?
Aye.
Commissioner Keeney?
Aye.
Chair Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner List?
Aye.
Okay, so the application has passed as submitted. A reminder that there is a 10-day calendar appeal period for planning commission decisions that can be made by a request to City Hall. Okay, so moving on to our next topic, we have number 11 dash, or 11.1, which is a zoning text change, 22-01, for short-term rental uses within the central business district, the commercial zone district, and the highway commercial zone district. Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Chair Lepper, members of the planning commission. Just a quick recap. This is a request by the city council. This is per the Resolution of Intent 8530, that the planning commission consider amendments to Title 10 of the zoning ordinance, which are the City Code regarding definitions of types of commercial lodging facilities, including the regulation of short-term rentals, and to allow for transient short-term rentals within the commercial zone, the highway commercial zone, and the central business district zone, and provide clarifications of the same. The location is throughout the city. The recommended zoning text amendments would affect all those properties that are zoned, CBD, commercial, and highway commercial. Those maps are included in your staff report from May 17th. And we're going to May 17th meeting. This item was first considered by the commission, although we only had three members present at the time, on May 17th of this year. And the planning commission did consider staff's recommended ordinance regulating short-term rentals within these three commercial zone districts. The commission did consider public comment and deliberated on the proposed draft ordinance, providing staff some additional direction, modifications to be included in draft ordinance as follows: basically directing staff to initiate those changes per your direction and come back here today. So there's one up, so I did these in bulleted forms. We updated section 10-4-20E2, and that was to require the responsible person or representative to be available on a 24/7 basis, and that that person be available to be at the location onsite within one hour. The second bullet, the request, was include requirements for a host to post information for guests on high fire risk areas, and how to sign up for the El Dorado County Code RED. And this provision has been added to section 10-4-20E6. Third bullet, require the fire official to be present for the annual inspections of units to make sure the fencible space ordinance is being maintained. The reason for that is, under the permit, which would require annual renewal, normally will then planning staff review, but will also then notify the fire district, fire marshal, so he could also do a review. So we added that in there. And then the last bullet is not allow conversion of new mixed-use developments within the commercial zones to be used for short-term rentals. So staff added this restriction, and this is 1-4, or 10-4-20C. And this restriction would be consistent with the intent of the mixed-use provisions that were added to the commercial zone districts pursuant to ordinance number 1667, and that was provided in your staff report, which was adopted by the city council on October 28th of 2014. And the purpose of that ordinance was to promote the development of employee housing and implement the housing element, the cycle five element, program number six, which was to facilitate housing for employees in accordance with the state's Employee Housing Act. So that's, so you can read that change. Basically, it was a very, very simple addition. And then lastly, staff on its own made an additional modification. When a question came up at our last meeting on an item regarding the code sections within the residential single-family zone districts that basically allows for the renting of no more than one room. And so that's been very confusing to staff and the public alike. So basically, to give a little background, this is an archaic section, I think, as I explained at the last meeting. When codes typically jurisdictions would attempt to regulate and restrict the use of single-family dwelling units to families. The city can no longer define what a family is. And this is California, it doesn't apply to all 50 states, but there are other states that also had their own, you know, Supreme Court challenges to these kinds of restrictions. So there is nothing that would prohibit somebody from renting a room, or several rooms for that matter, that are unrelated. In other words, your roommates. Therefore, staff recommend deleting this unenforceable section from the single-family residential zone. Really has no effect other than deleting something that we cannot force. We haven't been able to force since, I think, 1980, it was a case in Santa Barbara where this came to light, and the California Supreme Court said you couldn't do that. So in conclusion, short-term rental use for transient accommodations within the central business district, the commercial district, and the highway commercial zone districts may be considered commercial lodging facilities, but they're currently not defined as a hotel or motel use. It's currently defined by the zoning code. And hotels and motels are six units or more. They have different requirements under the building code. So we wanted to accommodate this reduced unit scale, five or less individual units. Close regulation of this type of lodging facility requires more defined regulations since these facilities typically do not have onsite management, as a hotel or motel does, and can become a nuisance of inconsiderate guests, and this is the word I used at our last meeting, run amok. The permitting process through the recommended short-term rental permit would allow for a more clear set of operational standards. An annual review process would also allow for the review of the facility annually, and nonrenewal of a short-term rental determined to be a nuisance to the community. So with that, staff is recommending that the commission continue to consider the request, staff's report, as well as the additional public comment in the public record, and make a recommendation to the city council, amending Title 10 of the City Code that would add short-term rental uses within the central business district, the commercial, and the highway commercial zone district, subject to the approval and issuance of short-term rental permit. That concludes staff's report.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Do any commissioners have questions for staff based on the report that you received?
I'm going to have a couple of questions, and forgive me because I wasn't here at the last meeting, so some of these may have been addressed. Oh, just to be clear, first and foremost, all of the state residential, single-family, all that's being excluded, right? You're not allowed to have short-term rentals in those areas, is that correct? That is correct. These changes are only looking at those three commercial districts. It was the direction of the council that we would examine those commercial districts that allow hotels and motels by right. Okay, that's what I thought. But what about, if you have a guesthouse, because every one of these mentions a guesthouse, right? Because that's how they're defined, I think. So if an individual has a guesthouse in these various residential, are they still prohibited from a short-term rental? Yes. Okay, that's just for clarification. I'm always reluctant to suggest language, particularly when I think a lawyer drafted something. But in the second to last whereas on page two, and I assume the ordinance that was at the front of the packet is for today, the let go, was from last time, right? Okay, so that second whereas at the top of the page, the sentence, the last sentence reads, "Because there is no possibility that the proposed ordinance may have significant effect on the environment," it's exempt from SEQA, okay? That could be factual. I always get nervous when it says, "No possibility, just a suggestion." I'm not going to ask for it in the motion, but just a suggestion staff can take back. Maybe you want to say, "Because there is no reasonable possibility," just to leave the door open. And then, "Ordinance may have a significant effect, significant unmitigatable effect." So in other words, I guess what I thought when I read this was, well, that's pretty absolute, and if someone's going to challenge it, that might be a point for someone to challenge it. So that was a comment. Yeah, staff could just add, you know, typically, when you're looking at SEQA, you're looking at sort of a hierarchy, and so, you know, it's fairly reasonable. Typically, I think most of these cases, you're going to be looking at a structure that's already developed, already there, and even if somebody were to develop a small structure, there are other sections of SEQA that that would fall under. But what we're trying to say is, is there's not going to be a significant impact on the environment. Sure. Like somebody building over a creek. That I agree with, but it said, "No possibility." When it says, "No possibility," gives just my little quick flick. That's just an observation. On page four, item D, permit required, this would be D4, and this deals with the inspection by city and El Dorado County Fire Marshal. Perfectly reasonable, but are there any parameters under which that happens? You know, do you have to give notice, or what trick? I presume a complaint can trigger it, probably, an inspection, but is there anything else that would trigger it? What kind of parameters have to be given, how much advance notice, or they can just show up at any time? You follow what I'm saying? Well, if we do receive a complaint, like if the property isn't being well-maintained, there's fire hazard, the general public can make that file a complaint with our department. We'll investigate. But in your question pertaining strictly to an annual review that we would do just in matter of course of the permit, that's a responsibility of the permit holder. Now, that I understand, but it says, "And be subject to site inspection." My question is, are there any parameters around that? And I guess the language I'd be looking for, as specified in City Code, whatever, or whatever procedures you have, because it just says, "They can be subject to inspection," which I understand, I'm just wondering if there are parameters for those inspections. Yeah, there'd be the two parameters. One, like I described earlier, complaint-driven, because we inspect properties for complaints currently that are not short-term rentals. But in this case, if they're under a permit, that permit would require that the owner instigate an annual review. Oh, so they can, as part of annual renewal, an inspection more than likely, not automatically, but more than likely will happen. Certainly can happen. We would like to do an annual review. Okay, that's great. And have, I mean, that was the desire of the commission.
Fell in line with the fencible space.
And so that language is in response to, I think this may have been added, this section D4 was added per commission deliberation. We felt that was important. Sure. And again, just to finalize on your question, yes, when they come in, it'll be in their permit that there will be an annual inspection. Okay, there's a parameter. That's parameter process, I'm going to. Yes. Okay. Then going down to the, and I believe under E2, this may have been added as part of deliberation, the 24/7 availability and onsite with one hour, one hour, right? I think, and I support that, but I was just wondering, can be onsite with one, within one hour, kind of strikes me as kind of weak. Excuse me. Oh, sorry. Okay, I'm going to excuse my child. He's either really strongly objecting to my, or supports it, I'm not certain. And can be onsite with one hour. I'm just thinking some other language must be onsite with one, when requested or if needed. Again, going back to parameters, right? I understand the intent of this, but to say, "And can be," I'm not entirely sure what that means. But I think the intent of this, correct me if I'm wrong, because this came up, I think, in your deliberation, you wanted somebody has this, hey, an obligation. And by the way, on that point, can they designate somebody? Because that would also exclude them from going on.
Yeah, I think.
Responsible person, or they're designate?
Yeah, I think a responsible person could be someone who is not the property owner. So it's just a responsible person, so I think.
Oh, a responsible person, okay, I read that correctly.
Yeah, and then the intent, I would say, behind the request I had made for this, is really to make sure that there's a local site contact in the event that there's a problem or emergency, et cetera, that we're not having, you know, somebody venture capital firm from.
No, I support the intent, it makes sense. I'm just wondering about, can be onsite with one, one hour, and enforced, how you would enforce that? That's how I was kind of approaching it, so.
Well, I think the thought, too, is if something happens and a person isn't onsite within an hour, then their license is in jeopardy, so they need to be responsible in thinking that through.
Well, that's a good character, I was sick, I mean, that's kind of sick for it, yeah. Okay, well, I'll just leave that as an observation. Oh, on the following page, E, I guess, noise. Excessive noise should be prohibited between the hours of 10:00 and 8:00, of course. Do we need to define this as in decibels, or how it works? Or is excessive noise in terms of like our nuisance code, is excessive noise? Be nuisance driven. That's a term of art, it doesn't have to be like noise that extends beyond the property boundary. They don't have a noise meter, or not looking, getting a noise meter. I think it's your typical nuisance complaint that a neighbor would have if your neighbor's playing stereo too loud because they have a party going on, and they can't hear very well because of the radio. Okay, and then my last question, just a general question. Has there been any opposition, any up to this that we know of? Just curious, everybody is? I'm trying to think, we had some, well, if you recall, because you were involved in the, when staff brought to the commission some changes to be made, we were asking the commission to adopt a resolution modifying the special temporary use permit items, and we added, first, we added the short-term rentals to the central business district, and then we also had, we're attempting to add it to the commercial. So the central business district sailed through, nobody appealed. There was an appeal to, I'm sorry, it was the highway commercial. So there was an appeal that went to council, and then that's why we're here. Council then wanted staff to go do it with a little more thorough ordinance. No, that I understand, but so, the public hasn't seen this yet, aside from your last meeting and tonight? Well, that's the only opposition. The opposition, I wouldn't say exactly what it was, they felt that we were losing affordable housing if we allowed. Why recall that? Womenly units in the highway commercial zone to change to short-term rentals. That's the opposition. So when council goes to adopt this, they may or may not get opposition to it at this level, because we're simply recommending. Okay, thank you for the time and indulgence. I have no other questions.
Do any other commissioners have questions based on the report that you received?
I also have some questions, and I posed these to staff earlier today, and here, and I had a long discussion, and I just want to bring these up, my questions up to now, not to start a discussion at this point, but mostly, now that we have members of the public present, want to raise these issues in case it's something that you feel you, you know, would like to comment on, in addition to whatever else brought you here tonight. And what I'm trying to do is get clarification and a better understanding for myself, and make sure also that we've considered all the aspects and that we have a robust and durable ordinance that we can pass on to the city council for their consideration. So my first question is under section two, the findings, and it is the definition of short-term rental. In that section two, one, short-term or vacation rental is defined as a single dwelling unit, and you can read along. My concern is of the requirement for cooking. My concern is of the requirement for cooking facilities. In our definition of a short-term rental, we're requiring that, and then further on, in, yes, and then on the next page, under section three, when we get into 10 dash one dash four. So, starting with our definition, and then going down to the definition in section three below, we're requiring a full kitchen. And when I discussed this with Mr. Rebus, he, his concern here was that a property owner might try to market and rent something that's really below standard, that didn't have, that had simple, simple plumbing, and, you know, a small space, and, you know, I appreciate that that would be the worst-case scenario. But what I would like to hear from other commissioners and the public is the requirement for a full kitchen, whether we can have quality rentals that serve the public and take care of this without that requirement. You know, in, we also say that SDRs are similar to motels and hotels, which typically, some do, but typically do not have, you know, a full kitchen. They may offer a microwave and a small refrigerator. So if we're saying on one hand that these are similar to motels and hotels, I want to be clear, and I want to put in the public record as we deliberate, you know, why we're making this requirement, or if we decide, you know, perhaps we don't need it, then make a suitable modification.
Commissioner Keen, are you saying, sorry, just so I understand, are you interpreting cooking as meaning a full kitchen?
If you look on, let's see, there's the preamble, and then if you go to one, two, page three, section three, action, 10 dash four dash, 10 dash one dash four, definitions, and there's commercial lodging facilities, then breakfast, hotel, motel, and then the next one is short-term rentals. In that text on the third line, it says, and a full kitchen.
That's a good question.
And a full kitchen is defined elsewhere in our zoning code, as having, you know, I, I brought it along in case you want to look at it, but basically it says a range or a stove top and an oven. So I, I don't know that we, I, I just want to be clear on what the requirement is for that definition. I appreciate where Mr. Rebus is coming from. He wants us to have quality things, not substandard things that are for rent. In my thinking, a kitchen is an amenity that you could advertise and, you know, charge more for it. It may not be necessary for everyone who comes in and just wants to stay a night or two in Placerville, you know, if they plan on going to our restaurants, they, they aren't planning on cooking, preparing meals, and then being short-term rental. So we can talk about this a little bit more after we break it back for deliberation. Again, I want to hear from the public and everyone, so that I'm clear on, on that requirement. My other concern is 10 dash four dash 20C, the prohibition of converting the long-term rentals in the mixed-use developments to short-term rentals, I find a little too restrictive. Now, I, I listened to the deliberations from the last meeting, and I appreciate, you know, the concern, and I, it's one of my own. But I also know that conditions change, and, you know, things are subject to amendment, and if, if conditions just, economic conditions change, that this can be brought back. The city council can direct staff to amend things as, as we need. But at the outset, it's my intent to have, as I said, a durable and, and flexible ordinance that accommodates a wide range of, of needs, and also serves us into the future. So my question, and this, here, this is not something I'm clear on, if we, if the commission agrees that, you know, maybe we could have a little flexibility on this, an owner of a long-term rental that's in one of these mixed-use developments as described in the attachment that you provided, could that owner come before the planning commission and to request a site plan review and approval prior to having the special temporary use permit issued on that? Is that, would that be a way for us to protect the, the long-term employee housing that we're concerned about? I, I'm trying to think what we can build into this to, to allow for that flexibility, that there is some sort of review of, of the conversion before we, as opposed to just allowing for it.
Well, that would be the prerogative of, of the planning commission. This, this section was added in based on comments and the desire of the commission to make this restriction, and mainly because in the attached ordinance that the city adopted, I think in 2014, that was implements in state regulations where the city was required to try and solidify employee housing. And so prior to that, we didn't really have mixed-use development, it was strictly commercial. So this was a way of allowing for mixed-use development where you could have residential units either below or above grade level to provide for employee housing. So that was very, very specific. So now we're saying, we're going to somehow go against what the intent was of that original ordinance, to make way for short-term rentals at the expense of possibly losing employee housing. But I would agree with what you said, I mean, you could certainly create a review mechanism such as a site plan review. Typically, a site plan review is triggered when there's a change of occupancy, but I don't think there would be a change in occupancy from long-term rentals to a short-term rentals. Probably doesn't change occupancy at all. So it wouldn't trigger anything, so we'd have to be very specific if that was the desire of the commission to have that review.
The challenge would be the findings to grant, right?
Challenge would be the findings.
Challenge would be the findings to grant the exception. I mean, I, I, in general, I always like there to be an exception, to be flexible, because there shouldn't be rubber stamps in the Placerville, can't be rubber stamped for a lot of reasons. But I, I could just see, the devil would be able to detail all that, but I understand what you're, you're saying.
Yeah, because staff didn't originally have that restriction, didn't, but I think it was astute of the, of the planning commission during deliberations at our last meeting, but that came up, because that had slipped my mind about that ordinance, creating, allowing for the mixed-use development for employee housing, because it is a severe shortage in this community.
Part of the discussion around that too, was to ensure that people aren't going and getting credits for developing housing, only to turn around and turn them into short-term rentals, rather than what they're intended to and possibly being rewarded for doing that building.
Nothing would preclude the issue of developing an exception mechanism from being brought up at a later date. So if this quote-unquote restrictive language was left in here, that's, okay, an exception mechanism can be developed at a later time, right? Doesn't have to be developed now. If you have this restriction that says, this, you cannot convert, you know, units constructed for sort of mixed-use provisions, for the employee housing, the concept we were thinking about, right? So this is a restriction. But at some later date in time, a mechanism to grant an exception could be created and then brought to us for approval, and that's what we want, right?
True.
Yeah.
That could be done in.
So this is not an absolute, bogged, done deal.
An ordinance is never absolute.
Right.
Ordinance has changed, like the wind, like the blowing winds, it's, well, times change.
Talking about adding a requirement to bring it before the planning commission, what's the cost on a special use permit to have it seem to, to come before the planning commission?
It usually depends upon the environmental review, but I don't have my fee schedule with me, but I'm trying to take a site plan review, I think it's, gosh, $500, I think.
Okay, so, and the reason I ask that is, are we setting ourselves up in the position that somebody looks at that and says, I've got to, I've got to put out an extra $500 to go and get this? Well, forget that anyways, I'm just going to do it on the slide and see if anybody ever catches it. And so then we don't even know who's doing this. That, that's why I'm afraid of putting that extra step in there of, of a review, when somebody could walk into the desk and say, okay, I've got this, I've got this room, but my, this is business, I've got a, I've got a microwave, I've got a sink, I've got a refrigerator, I've got a bathroom, and I'd like to rent it out. Versus coming to the planning commission and spending that extra $500. I would not be in favor of that.
Well, then they'd have to apply to us, if they had, that they'd have to apply to us, even without this provision, they'd have to apply to us to use that, their, their property in this manner. So if they choose not to do it, then they're, I don't trust them anyway, I guess, for.
Yeah, sometimes it's difficult, because I mean, there's, you know, and I've seen it in my career, whenever there's a big spike in the cost of housing, there's a lot of house flipping that's going on, a lot of work done without permits. So we're inundated with a lot of investment work, people that have to deal with entire, an entire house would build without permit, if they're not. So I mean, it, it happens, a lot of work is done without permits, so, you know, we do the best we can to police and be aware of what's happening. Our code enforcement staff, they do check the internet sites for, you know, illegal or unpermitted short-term rentals, and we, from time to time, we capture them and stop them. So it's, it's difficult, really, to have that mindset where you're, you don't want to regulate something in a certain way, because then people are going to do it on the slide. I think it happens a lot anyway, so my recommendation is not to really look in that direction. Sometimes you do, I'll give you an example, water heaters is one. You know, water heaters, the cost of a permit for a water heater is set very, very low, intentionally, because we want people to come in and get a permit for a water heater, because there's a lot of new requirements on the building code. We want the resident to put them in correctly, and hopefully be done by a licensed contractor, rather than one that's, I'm just going to put this in myself, not get a permit, and then something happens in the future. So that's a situation where, yeah, we'd want to try and reduce unpermitted work with regards to water heaters, so we set the permit extremely low, so it's not an impediment, so.
Okay. So at this time, if you guys are ready, if I can move to the public comment and come back to the discussion on these topics?
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and do that. So I'm going to open the public comment on this topic. Members of the public who wish to address the commission can spend up to three minutes talking about this, this ordinance. Okay? Do any members of the public wish to approach the commission?
I'll go first.
Okay, great. We're just standing and talking today, we're just waiting it.
Thank you. Thank you for your very thoughtful approach to the short-term rentals in Placerville. I do have a suggestion. So keeping the short-term rental City Code simple, and I actually suggest that you consider not limiting them to the commercial zones. When I looked at the Sacramento one, I couldn't see it limited to commercial. The reason I say that, which, and it sounds a bit crazy for me, but it's, I think if we focused on permitting the current Airbnbs, it would actually, the reason why I say that is, if we permit the 16 that I found when I looked the other day, it would not lower the housing stock further, as these dwellings are already not available for long-term rentals due to their current Airbnb use. And if new short-term rental owners have to get permits and the illegal ones continue to operate, it makes it unfair to the law-abiding citizens who are being compliant, and turning a blind eye kind of comes, gives ammunition of, of giving permission. So like I said, I just went to Airbnb, and 16 Placerville City properties came up, and I tried to focus them all as, you know, individual properties versus, you know, sort of the secret garden, entire guest suite, hot tub, as you know, many, many of those. So I, I know short-term rentals are here to stay, and I really thank you for trying to organize them to have the least negative impact on our city. But I think if we start with the current ones, it would be dealing with reality, because they're there. But thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your comments. Any other members of the public who should address the commission? Go ahead, Dave. Either one of us.
I just had just a couple thing, a couple quick, quick comments. My name is David Ross, I live in Placerville, I have the one short-term rental project that's gone in front of you guys a couple times. The one thing about the fire inspection and those type inspections, like our property is inspected by the fire department, state mandated, because it's three or more units, so it's state mandated, mandated every year. So we've had that two years in a row so, so far. The one concern I had was with the paved parking requirement. A lot of these are residences and have been residences for a long time. If you're looking at the occupancy of, of what they were as a residence, and what they're going to be now as a short-term rental, I would argue that there's going to be even less traffic in going in and out of the, of the unit, residence, whatever, than there, than there was previously. My, my property specifically has been there for over eight years, there's never been paved parking, there's not paved driveway coming in, so I don't know what just having a large paved area is going to, is going to do for, for anyone, it's not, it's not really going to help anything, it's going to create more runoff and drainage right into the creek there. And I think other, other short-term rentals is going to affect them in a similar way. I just don't know if that's a necessary requirement. And then the other thing, I just, I guess wanted clarification on if a single-family residence, they're, so they no longer can rent out just a room in their home, because I just saw that that was lined out, and I didn't understand if that was a, if that wasn't going to be a possibility anymore. And just, as we all know, the home prices in our, in Placerville have gone up almost 30% this year, maybe, maybe over 30% now. I just, I don't, I no longer do this, but when I was in college, like the first house that I bought, I always had a room rented out, it was a good way to help me be able to afford the house. I feel like if that's taken away, I know there's other people in our community that won't necessarily be able to afford to live here if, if they're not allowed to rent out a room in their house, even if it's just on a short-term basis and not permanently, or 30 days or more, which is more cumbersome and to, to the homeowner. I think that was it.
Great. If I may, or, did you want to go ahead and swap, and then I'll, we can answer, I think, the question.
Go ahead and answer him, and then I'll take my turn.
I think Mr. Rebus had touched on it, but I think you might not have quite been here yet, that the room rental is unregulatable because we can't define who, can you restate the family?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you said it.
Yeah, unfortunately, David, you weren't here when we discussed that, that particular part of the code. It, it's caused a lot of confusion, both the, the staff and the public, like, what does that mean, you can only rent one room? So if you have a four-bedroom house that you own, you can only rent out one room? Well, no, under, under a court case back in 1980 in Santa Barbara, basically, the, the city cannot define a family. A lot of those regulations were to maintain the integrity of a single-family home. I've studied the history of that, as back when I was in school. I remember that, Kate, discussing that. And it was, it was to preserve the integrity of a single-family dwelling in neighborhoods. They wanted families, not, not cohabitation, like, you know, you get all the different criteria of different things. And so generally speaking, a lot of codes say, yeah, you can rent one room out to a non-related person. It was to define the family. And so, as you said, like when you were in school, like when I was in school in Santa Barbara, where it was very expensive even way back then, yeah, I had a lot of roommates. And removing that doesn't do anything other than making rent as many rooms as they want. So the city would still have the option of regulating the occupancy of a single-family dwelling based on building code requirements, but not based on, you know, relationships or anything of that nature. You can rent out the whole rooms and have roommates. That's all it does. It's an archaic section of the code that needs to come out, it came out with the planning commission at the last meeting, and so, you know what, I'm just going to recommend that we strike that out. Doesn't affect this, this issue per se, short-term rentals at all.
So Madam Chair, this is probably out of order, and I can be called out of order, but I don't understand this issue.
So at the end of the ordinance, there's the cross-out of renting of not more than one room? one room?
Okay, and all of those, okay.
And what we're saying is that we're not able to regulate that. We can't say you can only rent one room in your four bedroom house.
Okay, but, but there, I think a distinction is being made, this is my confusion, I think a distinction is being made, even if it's not overtly stated, between short-term rentals, which are like Airbnbs and weekends, versus you getting a roommate in college, you, you don't want rapid turnaround, right? You, you wanna get somebody in that's gonna stay, you want some stability, I think. Are we making a distinction between those?
No.
We aren't. So I'm, so in the-
Short, short-term rentals are defined, we, we define that in the code, and that's 30 days.
Or less.
Or less.
Okay, and so that use is permitted, that use is permitted in all of the residential real estate? I thought-
No. All we're doing, removing, we're removing a restriction, the renting of one room. It has nothing to do with, oh, you're allowed to do a short-term rental. The short-term rentals is defined. You can't do a short-term rental in a single-family home. You can't do it now.
Okay, so we can't do a short-term rental in a single-family home? And the way this was, the way this was written, this was limiting you to, for long-term rental?
Yes.
So it was inconsistent with the court case?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that, Claire.
Yes. That answered your question.
I was lost, not, I was reading.
And in the past, it has been, people are starting to look at that, oh, maybe this is a way for a short-term rental.
Okay, I understand, thank you so much.
When it really had nothing to do with short-term rentals.
Okay, thank you so much. Sorry.
No, it's okay.
I thought that's what you were asking about, the removal of the rental.
Yeah, yeah, no, it was, so just to clarify, you, so you can use like a marketing platform like Airbnb to rent out a room in your house, or you cannot?
It can't be short-term.
You cannot rent a, a room in your single-family home in a residential zone for short-term rental. But you can use a platform to rent it out on term, and it's more than one room. You're not restricted to one room. That's what this is, it's restricted to one room right now, and it's unenforceable, so staff wants it removed. Has to be for longer than 30 days, doesn't it? Oh, yes. Has to be longer than 30 days.
In a residential district.
Yes.
Okay, so, go ahead, did you wanna speak on the public comment?
Well, the first thing I wanna do is thank you guys, because you're awesome. I, I think of myself as special, because I have this place, and it's great, and it's special, and on a case-by-case basis, there will be a lot of real easy decisions to make. You guys are trying to put together something that's gonna cover every case, every scenario, from now until the next person jumps up and down and gets excited, and I get hats off, you're amazing. That said, I wanted to bring up something, when I raised my hand last week, that Commissioner Gofford said, and one of them, one of the comments that you made was something about people buying, you know, that, that the people who buy are aware of what they're, what's kosher and what's not kosher. And I have to say for myself, I was pretty naive. We bought the Blue Bell Building 30-plus years ago, and I just am fat, numb, and happy. I was involved in the Carrie House, thought that when we were full, oh gee, I wish I could rent out one of the rooms upstairs, because we have people that are snowed out, you know, and they can't get to Tahoe, and the highway's closed, and we've no place, and if it were me, I'd put them up in my living room, because that's who I am. And then we have people like Dave, who did buy a piece of property specifically, because it specifically was zoned specifically for the purpose for which he wanted to use it. And then he came up against people who weren't happy. But I think that, that concept of, of people buying property and being aware is gonna, is gonna handle that mixed-use-to-remain-mixed-use issue, I think that was you that brought that up? Anyway, no, I, um-
I didn't.
Okay, no, anyway, if it's mixed-use, and you're buying it as mixed-use, and the mixed-use is based on something that was written, that apparently somebody gets bonus points for putting in housing for their employees, that, then they know, and I'm sorry your wife isn't here, but it should be incumbent upon realtors to say, this is what mixed-use is, this is what mixed-use is based on, and if you think that you're gonna, you know, put in something entirely different, think again, this is what it's for. So anyway, but that said, things like evacuation routes, and things like having somebody on call, those are wonderful additions to this, and I think they're appropriate, so that, you're right, we don't have, you know, somebody LLC out of New York buying up properties all over just because they can rent them out. And, and that was, I think that was all I was gonna say. Anyway, thank you for the work that you do.
Good, thank you very much, appreciate your comments. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the commission on this topic? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of this hearing, or this review, and bring it back to the commission for any further discussion and action. I will say that I reached out to Pierre around the kitchen today as well, and had a question around it, and we discussed the fact that there is a definition, which I understand you still might have questions around, so we can kind of explore that, of a full kitchen in the zoning code, which would be pointed to if an application came with a question around if their kitchen was sufficient. I sort of found that to be okay, but I understand where you're coming from around whether or not that is a fully requirement. I do think, I tend to fall in, in the category of wanting this to be, allow it to be reasonable for people, but also to have the requirements to allow to have a certain standard within the community. So I don't know, I'd be open to the kitchen discussion, but just to say that that came up on my radar as well, and I think it needs to either be exactly what's pointed to in the code, or defined in there. I was satisfied with pointing it to it in the code, but the topic around that.
Chair Lepper, staff could just add a few comments to that, you know, what was staff's thinking?
Yeah.
First, these short-term rentals are not hotels, they're not hotels, they're less than six, so there's no onsite management, there's no, you know, these are standalone single-family units per the building code. So we, we didn't wanna see somebody finding a closet that happened to have plumbing and a toilet facility in it, and all of a sudden, they think they can just put a hot plate, and boom, they got a short-term rental. In other words, a hotel room, just a single hotel room all by itself on a lot, or within a building, that's not what we're looking, that's not what the short-term rental is really supposed to be, and so that's why it's, it's different. And so, and again, a short-term rental, we want it to, to meet the minimum building code requirements of a dwelling unit. It can be very, very small, but it needs to comply with being categorized as a dwelling unit, not a hotel room.
With the amenities.
Right.
Yeah.
If they wanna go to, you know, six or more, well, then they're hotel motel, and it's sort of a different set of requirements. Somebody could do that. We don't want just individual, now, just hotel rooms, without the kitchen.
Which, yeah, well, I, I agree that the reference to the city code as what defines a full kitchen, I was satisfied with that.
Yeah, and that's in the code. There is a, the building code that really addresses a hot plate and a microwave.
I find that very, very interesting and illuminating, frankly, because I was really kind of sympathetic to it for a second, I would prefer to have the market drive it, but as you describe it, that kind of makes some sense to me. Actually, my concern around that whole topic is, in cooking versus whatever, I'm more concerned about the food waste disposal. And, and I, and, and so I would say, where you have cooking, I would say including food waste disposal, because we, I guess we're, if we're saying full kitchen is implied, so that's already gonna be covered, right? So I have to worry about it. So if we leave it the way it is, and a full kitchen is gonna be the standard, I always don't have to worry about it.
As referenced.
But if we didn't, if we don't go, for whatever reason, this commission decides it doesn't wanna go to full kitchen requirement, I think food sentiment, food disposal would be really important, because that gets to the, the hot plate and microwave, and what do you do with the leftover stuff, right? That's kind of-
Yeah, I could probably answer that in brief. I don't wanna get too much into that side of it, but under AB 1383, that's a new state regulation that's being overseen by CalRecycle, and so it's part of what our department does, we implement the new regulations. The collection and recycling of food waste is gonna be mandatory for every business and every resident in the city of Placerville, so I think that's, it'll be covered.
I meant a garbage disposal, well, I guess is where I was going. I, I didn't mean necessarily the third bin or whatever. I was thinking about a garbage disposal as part of the cooking range or put-in. I think that's already covered under the definition of a-
Yeah, we have a specific definition in our zoning code of what a kitchen, a full kitchen is, and it doesn't include that, so.
Garbage disposal is not included.
Yeah.
Should it be? I hate to, I hate to get-
That might be, but I mean-
Okay, other way, all right.
Yeah, and I guess I would say also, I'm sort of in the favor of keeping it with the full kitchen, because we do have a definition in our code of what that means, so it makes it very clear. And I'm also concerned as staff is about people converting closets or other things that are really not intended to be dwelling units, so.
All right, so this, now I'm wondering what kind of flexibility staff has. Suppose someone comes to you, suppose we, we decide, okay, a kitchen isn't necessary, it's, it's an amenity that can be offered, and so that's an upgrade. What discretion does staff have if they come and they've got, they've got a closet with running water? Do you, can, do you have, if we don't require it to meet this definition of a dwelling unit, if we change our base definition, and then an application comes to development services that is, just as you described, something that's really not appropriate, can you deny their application? Or if they're meeting- So we have, we have the protection against that worst-case scenario because of the discretion in development services.
Well, it's like I said earlier, you know, we've seen an entire house built without a permit, so it's not to say somebody could, we're getting that all the time.
But we're assuming someone who's gonna go through the permitting process.
If somebody's gonna follow the rules, they're gonna come in, they're gonna submit a building permit application, and we're gonna deny it because their, their permit is not gonna show a full dwelling unit meeting the building code.
I guess that's where I'm not making the, seeing the nexus. To me, it's discretionary to require it to meet the standard of a dwelling unit, and that's what I don't get. Why, why does it have to meet this dwelling unit definition to have a full kitchen if we have the protection when they come for a permit that it is suitable? Say, it does look a lot like a, a basic motel room with, you know, maybe not even, not even a microwave, but it is large, you can accommodate a couple of people overnight. I, I'm trying to ensure, you know, that we're providing what, you know, the public wants, or what a property owner would like to market, as long as it's, it's habitable. To me, habitable doesn't, doesn't mean that you have to be able to cook a meal in it. I think, you know, we, we call these similar to motels and hotels, so why the requirement for the kitchen? Again, I just wanna make sure I understand the legal definition or requirement, and then what flexibility we might be able to have to change the base definition.
Well, there's no, staff is not, staff is not suggesting any flexibility. We're basically looking at what is a short-term rental? A short-term rental is a dwelling unit that's rented 30 days or less. We don't wanna create individual hotel rooms throughout the city.
In single-family homes.
Because it's then a hotel room, it's not really attached to a hotel or a motel. That's the, that's a key difference.
I think the activity, if I can bring the nexus, Commissioner Kenny, I think Staff and their court made the observation that short-term rentals, the activity of a short-term rental, providing lodging in a commercial business district or highway commercial, is very similar from motel lodging, right? That's, the activity is pretty much the same.
It's commercial lodging.
It's commercial lodging, but short-term rentals are not motels, and the stat, I think the stat, staff is putting forth is a standard for what short-term rentals should be. And, and so I think that, that might be it. And I, I'll go on record, I, I support staff's direction on this, I think.
And I'll go ahead and give another perspective, too. This is something that, back when our, Andrew Pan, our city planner, did a really good observation, I think when we were, we were discussing this earlier, and that's that a lot of times you have, over time, you'll have areas that are rezoned commercial that were once residential. And so, the city creates these legal non-conforming use, that's what it's called. You have a single-family home in a commercial zone that was established long before it became commercial, that's a legal non-conforming use. You couldn't come in and pull a building permit and build a house there. You could come in now and build a house there as a short-term rental, but not a single standalone hotel room.
Right.
We want a full standalone vacation rental, and somebody has full amenities, be able to stay there, you know, up to 30 days. They could actually probably stay there longer, but it's meant for 30 days if it's in a commercial zone. So I think that's the key difference.
Yeah, I, I get that, but we're also hinging this on, we've had a couple allocations come to the commission for new hotel space, and as we stand, you know, tonight, we don't have any more hotel rooms today than we did, you know, a year ago. And I see this as a way for Placerville to provide that very short-term rental of a night or two. And so, when I think about that, I, you know, I, I think that the proposals that have come before us, they will follow through, and in sometime in, hopefully near future, there will be a larger availability of the standard, which you think of as a hotel or motel room. But we don't have that today. So that's why I wanted the commissioners to think about the flexibility of a totally adequate overnight stay without the requirement of a full kitchen. So that's, that's really what I was thinking of, is to allow the, the most of our property owners who have suitable rooms to, you know, take advantage of this new ordinance, and provide places to stay for people traveling through, and who, then you don't want a kitchen. And the other thing that I thought about was when we presented this, and when we looked at the very first application above the bookery, that's a very constrained space, and, you know, there may be other places that are perfectly suitable, but it's gonna be, they're gonna be hard-pressed to get a full, as, as we call it, in other definition, it is a range or an oven and, and a, some sort of, what was it, stove top and an oven, two separate things. So I don't want to, you know, shut those kinds of places out by insisting that we have to have the full kitchen. So that's, I'm just gonna, you know, I can sense that I don't have support for this, but to just kind of wrap it up, that's what I was thinking of. Because I, we've heard this complaint before, there aren't enough places to stay in Placerville, and I'm trying to maximize that for us.
Just one more comment from me on that, Commissioner, and again, very compelling rationale, I think you have for this, and it's like, I see where she's going with this, and let the, you know, kind of let, let the market drive what the quality of amenity is. But then, you met, you said something, and I can't, I won't be able to paraphrase it exactly, but basically, it was something along the line that it could be something fairly simple, and what, again, what flashed in my mind, I think, is what staff is, is kind of concerned about, is, you know, and I mentioned it here under my breath, Harry Potter under the stair with, you know, running water and a hot plate. And I think staff is really trying to set a standard, because I think what happens is, we wanna discourage people who have possibly a closet or a little space from thinking they could do this, and so we, we do wanna set a standard for it. And so that, at the end of the day, I think that's why the, the full kitchen, I think, is probably the best way to go.
Well, you know, I, I totally agree with that, and I don't want, I think we would get a terrible reputation if that's what was available, but I also am assured that, you know, staff has the discretion to not, you, you aren't required to allow a permit for that particular situation. So, you know, I really think that our reputation and the consumers actually are protected, because these places are gonna be inspected annually. because these places are going to be inspected annually and, annually, and they have to reapply for their special temporarys permit. So, you know, I have full confidence that, you know, these will be habitable structures, actually quite, can be quite nice depending on what the owner wants to do with them, but certainly not a danger, not just something very basic. But, you know, I hear where you're, the rest of your comments, so thanks for that. Thanks for considering it.
Absolutely. And even to, you know, sometimes starting off, as Pierre said, it's a living document. So maybe we have a full kitchen, and if we are just bashing our head against these full kitchens, then maybe we can revisit that. But I think starting off with a high level of expectation around what should be provided within these zones in order to kind of manage it and see how it flushes out would be my inclination around it.
One completely different topic. One of the members of the public mentioned something about a paving requirement. And I haven't found a paving requirement in here anywhere except perhaps an oblique reference via the California Building Code for paying gas.
Section E, Development and Operational Standards.
Show me, okay.
E four, page four, it's kind of light note.
I see where.
It discusses maximum occupancy and parking.
Where's the paving part?
The number of paved parking spaces on the short-term rental property are shown in Table one.
Okay.
So there's paved twice there.
Okay, so is, so to staff then? Is paved meaning absolute to standard paving? Or is decomposed gra, I mean, are we really talking about, or are we talking about simply marked delineated spaces? Instead of paving.
Commercial zones, we're talking about pavement. So this is, this is, yeah, this is residential where pavement is not required.
Okay.
So in commercial zones, you're required to have paved parking. So if there's a change in occupancy, you're going to have to provide paving. That is in other sections of the city code.
Sure.
City code requires pavement in commercial. It's just that simple.
Now.
Just wouldn't change those other.
Okay, I agree, I agree, we got to do it. Now, to the extent that the concern for runoff and impervious pavement, and I share that concern, nothing precludes an applicant from using impervious types of paving materials. And we've had presentations on that to help prevent the runoff concern. You're right, it is, I forgot, this is in commercial, make pervious things.
Yeah, and Commissioner Friend, you've been on here a long time. You probably recall, it's quite some time ago, we did some revisions to our development guide that added, I'm trying to remember the name of the actual program, but where we looked at facilitating bio swales, impervious surfaces, pavement types, to be able to absorb water to reduce runoff. And it went through this commission, and it's in our development guide. So there's a lot of different options. But when you pave, you know, it's not that you just haphazardly pave without looking into drainage.
No, sure, of course.
And again, I forgot this was in commercial.
But thank you for touching on that because I did want to touch on that, that comment as well. Does anyone else have any either discussion, changes, proposals, motions, anything there for, for this?
I think this is a great attempt at this. I mean, I really do, I think this is, this is strong work.
I agree, and I also think with the public comment at the last meeting, of which there was a lot, which was really insightful in, on both sides, pro and not. I thought that this, when I reread it this time, especially after reflecting on that last meeting, I felt like it was a really good, strong ordinance that really lines out some things that we expect. But also, again, if we start facing things and have issues, we can always come back and visit it. But I certainly think that this is, and thank you for taking the time to write this because I do think it's important to have something in writing that at least outlines what we, what we're saying now, you know? And I think that's really good. So thank you for all of your hard work on this.
Something a little bit comical to me on this page, looking at four people in a studio apartment and then seeing excessive noise requiring the down below.
There's four really quiet people out there in the world.
Get in the studio.
So on this one, Pierre, do we need a motion to adopt it, to forward it to the city council?
No, you don't have.
Okay, so it's just, you've given our insight.
You're making the recommendation.
From what I hear, we're not going to change this.
Consider these changes.
To the language today, so, okay, okay.
So unless you want to just do it by affirmation, I think we are making a motion.
Oh, yeah.
To, we have to make a motion to recommend this to council.
Okay, great, thank you, so we do need.
And I move, I. Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
I would make that motion.
Okay, great.
That we, that we move the ordinance as presented this evening by Staff. I don't believe we've made any changes to it, right?
No.
So we move the ordinance as prepared by Staff for this date to the city council for consideration and adoption and taking into account.
Okay, great, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Abass, could you call roll?
Yes.
Discussion aloes, any discussion?
Further comments?
Okay. Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gotberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Keating?
Aye.
Chair Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner List?
Aye.
So the commission has recommended that this ordinance be forwarded to the city council for review and adoption.
And then that'll have its own public hearing for that whole process. People will be able to comment on it at the end then.
It's your will, and since it's an ordinance, there'll be introduction of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Two readings, maybe? Two readings.
Yeah.
Yeah, always two readings. And then even after it gets adopted, it doesn't become ineffective until 30 days after that adoption.
Yeah, okay. Again, I think it's really strong work.
Thank you to the public for coming, giving your insight, your input, and your experiences. Really do appreciate it, and it's very helpful. Okay, so now we're going to move on to.
Chair Lepper, could Staff ask for a question?
Yes, yes, it's 5:00 and 6:00, so we'll come back at 7:25. All right, so we are going to go ahead and reconvene the June 7th planning commission meeting. And we're going to move to our item 12, which is our new business. And the first thing we are going to do is item 12.1, the election of officers for 2022 or the remainder of 2022. Since all five of us are here today, we are able to move forward with this item. I haven't done this before, so do I ask for a nomination?
Yeah, my recollection is you would ask for nominations for, for chair, and then we would do the same then for vice chair.
Okay, so at this point now.
Before you do that, I want to thank you for your excellent service and extra service you've done well above and beyond your March 1st deadline. Thank you for doing so.
I was going to start calling myself Queen Amy, but, you know, I will relinquish the position.
No, 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 let's not get too carried away. We don't know what's going to happen yet.
You know, the carrot first, always with the carrot.
I will say, yes, I will say, so I will entertain at this point a suggestion for the chair for the remainder of the 2022 period.
Move Commissioner Gotberg as chair, Commissioner List as vice chair.
Okay, so we have a motion or a suggestion?
And move nominations be closed.
I would like to have some discussion. Mr. List, are you willing to serve as vice chair?
Yeah.
Okay, I was wondering, I can't remember the turn, and Commissioner Friend has conveniently, you know, closed off, tried to close off discussion. So I'd like to know.
He's come back a while ago.
Quite frankly, John, I think it's Michael's turn, but.
It is?
The vice chair?
I can't remember when you were either chair or vice chair, Michael. But I remember that John, I think John has served.
He hasn't been chair though.
It was last year.
I did the year we were at home.
In COVID.
Oh, COVID, right. Point of order, I think we ought to do chair first.
So one at a time, okay. So I have a suggestion for Vice Chair Gotberg to move to Chair Gotberg.
And who made the motion, Mr. Friend? Friend, do you have a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, second, all in favor of Commissioner Vice Chair Gotberg becoming chair? Gotberg, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
You're four.
No.
You say no?
You're opposing her appointment because, just because. I guess what you just said.
She said opposed, and I said aye.
Oh, okay, so we have one opposed.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Got it.
There's got to be one opposed up here, so.
So we have four in favor and one opposed to Commissioner Vice Chair Gotberg becoming chair for the remainder of the 2022 period. Does that mean that it passes?
Yes.
Okay, good. So congratulations, you will be chair for the remainder of the 2022 period. I'll now entertain suggestions for Vice Chair for the remainder of the 2022 term.
Well, just for sake of argument, I'll put in a competing motion to nominate Michael Friend as vice chair for 2022, just to make things difficult.
I would second that, if you're open to it. You haven't been in a leadership position since I have been on it. Is that?
Fair enough. No, you have, you did one year.
No, I don't know that I have. I deliberately have not because of my tenure, so. Maybe I have, I forget, you. Okay. Oh, you know, my first, I think, yeah, maybe one year I was chair. Yeah, yeah, I think I've been chair.
Okay. Would you, are you amenable to being vice chair more than the remainder of the period did?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
And Mr. List, do you have a burning desire to be vice chair?
Oh, no. I'm happy to let him serve.
You're okay either way.
We have a first from Commissioner Keating and a second from myself to elect Commissioner Friend as vice chair for the remainder of the 2022 term. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, four ayes and one no means that Commissioner Friend is now vice chair friend for the remainder of the 2022 term. Congratulations to our new officers. Enjoy whoever wants my torn-up script from the last year and a half, you're welcome to. Okay, so let's move to our final item for tonight, which is item 12.2, the 2021 Housing Element Annual Progress Report for Cycle 5. Mr. Abass, you have the report.
Thank you, Chair Lepper, members of the commission. This is a requirement of the state Housing and Community Development that we prepare an annual progress report on our housing element. And I apologize, it is sometimes very difficult to read because it's a, it's a number of tables that would stretch the length of this table. And so I'm, I had some good discussions with Chair Lepper earlier on this. And so just for clarification, just right from the start, she made some very, very good observations. Why is Cubby Drive listed in this? Because the permit was issued in 2019. Simple answer, that project, that was a very large custom home, took a long time to build. But anything on here meant that it was either issued or final in 2021. So even though the permit was issued in 2019, it wasn't final until 2021, therefore it's on the list. Another good question was in regards to Table A2. Why do we have the number of 17, and then we also have the number 11, and then we have the number of 7? What do those numbers mean with respect to each other? So we had 17 dwelling units that were issued and/or final in 2021. So a total of 17 in that category. Of those, 11 were issued permits and finalized in 2021. Okay? So we have 11 in all of 2021. This is where the little complication comes in. The cycle 5 housing element that just ended, it ended on March 31st. It was from 2013 through 2021. The new housing element that we just adopted is 2021 through 2029, beginning in April. So ACB has this cutoff, and a lot of the tables are done automatically by ACB. We don't manipulate everything, it populates itself. So out of those 11, seven of which were final after March 31st, 2021. So that's why there's a little bit of, I can see somebody reading that and becoming confused. But that's the way ACB does it, to have that cutoff. So anyways, not a whole lot of units were developed, none were developed, and the lot were very low income. We're hoping that some of our larger apartment complexes that are moving forward may change that, such as the Placerville Armory, such as the affordable housing project we're proposing on Middletown and Cold Springs, and then the other one being proposed on Mallard by Wine Sap and McIntosh Lane there, up there on that path, that'll be also an affordable housing project. And we all seem to be moving forward, a little glitches in some of the fundings available. There's a lot of money slushing around at the federal and the state level. So we're hoping to capture some of that money to subsidize the construction of these units. And then we'll be doing very well. Finally, we'll be able to construct some units that we call workforce housing because we have a lot of people now that can't even afford to work and live here. In fact, I think that's why Therapy Stores hasn't been able to open because they cannot find somebody who's willing to commute from who knows where to work either part-time or even full-time to keep that store open. So it's kind of dilemma, all the restaurants are having a lot of problems as well. And it's sort of interesting, and I'll go ahead and, it's just something that came to mind in our last discussion on the short-term rentals. We are finding that a lot of people are doing just what we were afraid of. Staff was sort of worried, we didn't want to just have these individual little motel units kind of popping up. Well, it's happening, and we're having seen that in long-term units. We've seen where from time to time, we'll find somebody has a guest house because a guest house doesn't have a kitchen at all. And so if you have a legally permitted guest house, you throw in a hot plate, you think you got a dwelling unit to rent out, not as a short-term rental, but as a long-term rental. So because of our housing crisis, we're seeing people getting kind of creative. I just want to throw it out there as sort of anecdotal issue that we have out there in the real world. So anyways, I guess the bottom line is I'm saying, yeah, we haven't been, you could see by these numbers, we haven't been, we haven't done very well in actually creating affordable housing units. But we're very confident that things will change in 20 years.
I heard a report today about a growing problem with mobile home parks. And in that rents for mobile home parks are taking dramatic rises. There's a number of factors, not the least of which including they're being bought up by corporate ownership and they're, and so private equity. I have private equity, and so, you know, many people, I presume, who are in mobile home parks are on fixed incomes and limited means. So I don't know, and I, you know, I generally don't like the government interfering in marketing, but this is, this is, I think, an exception. And have you heard anything, is the state looking at it? Or will the county, can the county or the city take action? I'll use the word rent control as if I know what it means. But some sort of, can this problem be slowed down at all? What tools do we have? And you can bring this back, I don't want to take up our time.
Yeah, I can chat a little bit about it. You know, from time to time, Staff has the opportunity to bend a ear some of the people up in Housing Community Development or with SAICOG because we meet with them on a regular basis. In fact, throughout the Housing Entitlement Update Program, we were, we had a lot of discussions and workshops with both ACB staff and SAICOG staff. But again, I emphasize that, and I agree with you, Commissioner Friend, I think government needs to get more involved. And I think it's more from the taxation end of the spectrum. I think, because you're exactly right, and I've read article after article that private equity firms and corporate like Blackstone are buying up thousands of single-family homes. And they've been buying up, I read an article probably a year or two ago about private equity firms and big money buying up these mobile home parks.
Entire subdivision.
Yeah, entire subdivision. And so I think unless the federal government, state government changes the tax code to create a disincentive. create a disincentive for certain kinds of real estate development, I mean, I don't think they're gonna see it for multifamily, because it's always, you know, but I think single-family homes, mobile home parks, those kinds of things, I think there needs to be a way where the tax code can be used to steer that kind of investment away, so that the person, the person that really should receive the benefit of the tax code is the owner-occupied person that wants to buy that single-family home, or rent that space, and mobile home park instead is being monetized in a big way. I mean, it's, you read all about it now, it's, but nothing seems to be done, and I think that's where I think it's been done. I mean, you could do rent control, it's very, very difficult, it's hard to rent and stuff, but maybe that's something they didn't look at, I don't know, I'm not an expert on rent control.
Yeah, I see it as a real social economic problem.
I mean, and if you even look at Canada, it's like, they've been battling this now, they're so deep into it now, they're so far behind regulating it, that it's basically an out-of-control beast at this point.
Vancouver.
A lot of the regulations that you're probably thinking of probably should have been done years ago at this point because of how housing is viewed as investment-wise, at least this is my observation.
Yeah.
The way that people view it as a long-term investment versus all the other ways that housing serves, you know, is pretty alarming. Especially out of, in states that are historically cheaper than California, where it's harder to buy an investment property in California when the base price is so high, but when you look at these other places that don't have that high cost of living.
Boom, come in.
It's easy to buy up literally a town, you know, and that's happening, yeah. Okay, so do we need to do anything with this? Make a motion to adopt it, make a motion to recommend it, forward it to the?
It is a receiving file.
Okay.
So, and I just want to just commend the commissioners that took the time to really dig into the weeds and look at the numbers, appreciate it, because we're gonna take it to council, and we wanted to get through this process, because, you know, it's a difficult table to do, and Mr. Painter was the one that did it for the last number of years, not me, so unfortunately I had some good staff that helped Andrew, they were there to help me get through this, and so we can send it off to the state. So anyways, thanks for reviewing.
Well, good job on staff's part too for getting that out. Get some of this.
Okay, so that is all set to be forwarded to city council, thanks everyone for their review. So now we'll move to matter 13, which is matters from commissioners and staff. Do any commissioners have any matters for staff today?
I just want to make one observation regarding the short-term rental ordinance, and the, one of the themes that ran through that ordinance was preservation of neighborhoods, and that may come up at some point, we may have to look at that document and say, this is the city's philosophy, because we believe in the preservation of neighborhoods. And again, that's going back to SB 89, appreciate that.
Any other matters from commissioners for staff? Staff, do anything for us?
Just one item I want to bring up, and thank you, Commissioner Friend, for reminding me about SB 910, because you had requested previously, you wanted any, if there were any attempts or applications on implementing SB 910, and I'm trying to remember, I think 9 is the one that allows for a ministerial subdivision of the property, a parcel matter. We, staff has received one inquiry, and the street was on escape speed, but we would definitely create then two parcels that are substandard to the minimum parcel size in this own district. We intently scheduled sort of a week, and it's gone way past, I haven't heard from the property owner, but I will keep, I'll keep the commission apprised for any of those allegations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, great.
Do we have a meeting, sorry?
No, no, you're fine.
Do we have a, the next meeting, will you respond?
Yes, we will have, thanks for asking, you will have another meeting scheduled.
Great, okay.
Oh, yeah, cell tower application, I think.
Yeah, there's a historic review, yeah, it's a historic review off of Bedford, and then.
Oh, boy.
More workshop has a ceiling container application.
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
And then the Broadway.
Can you hear me?
More workshop on Postville Drive, they're gonna, they're coming in with a side hand review to install a ceiling cargo container.
Okay, and that will be on our next agenda?
Next agenda, hopefully get that one on, so we have three items.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then a workshop with city council on the whole store review.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that. There was a person that was recommended to cleave, and then he passed that, named that person on to me, and I had a long discussion with this person, and this person is an expert more from a, let's just say, an architectural slash anthropological view, so he's able to do an environmental evaluation of the significance of the building, not, not as an architect to be able to examine and prescribe the different levels of rehabilitation of historic buildings, if that makes sense.
Sure.
So he strongly recommended then that I need to seek out an actual architect, and so we're trying to do that, and that'd be an architect that specializes in rehabilitation of historic buildings, there's a few out there, but a lot of them are further away, and we'll probably have to pay for them, and so, I'm trying to get some good estimates of what that would cost to bring such an expert out, so we can have that join the, thank you for asking.
And Peter Wolf might have noticed and knows too.
Oh, that's a good, yeah, and I owe him a call.
Yeah, this is birthday to the wolf. His birthday, yep.
You could start your call with happy belated birthday.
Yeah.
He's roped me into a lead role in a play, you can believe it or not.
Oh, that's great.
Vice Chair of the Planning Commission and an actor? I like it.
Yeah, Commissioner Friend.
Actors.
He's been acting around here for a long time.
Acting up.
Yeah.
Okay, well, if there is nothing further from anyone, which I'm not seeing, then I will go ahead and adjourn the Placerville Planning Commission meeting for June 7, 2022 at 7:46 PM.